I think so.
I'm ready.
Okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the JJC trustees meeting. Joan, would you call a roll please?
Broderick. Budzinski.
Here.
Garcia-Guian.
President.
Lee.
Here.
Lozano.
Here.
Mahalik.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Ann O'Connell.
Here. So, we're going to call to order. Well, first, we're going to call to order. We're going to ask that we have Michelle Lee with us virtually. And if there's no objections to that, I'd ask that request be acknowledged.
A motion? You want a motion in then or?
Yes, they'd like a motion.
Second.
Joan, call a roll please.
Mahalik.
Yes.
Morales, yes. Budzinski.
Yes.
Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Ann O'Connell.
Yes.
Okay, Michelle, you're good.
All right. You're in, Michelle. So, can we, since Michelle is in, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, Michelle?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So, let's have 1.1 business reports. Or am I jumping too far ahead of?
We had public comments.
Public comments, oh yeah.
You're not doing a roll call?
Sorry?
Already did roll call.
Did the roll call.
We did, sorry, we did.
No public comments?
No requests to speak, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. We did the pledge. Now we can do 1.1 business reports as needed.
So, I'd like to invite Jerome Godlock, our ERP guru and program manager. He's here this evening to provide you with an update and status on our Workday implementation. Welcome, Jerome, and thank you.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Right, I should be sharing my screen if everyone is able to see the screen.
Yes.
So, first, thanks to the board as well as the president and the president's cabinet for allowing me to present today. The last board update on the ERP project was in April by Jim Sur. What I will be doing today is going through and talking about our successful go-live with Workday. Yes, we have gone live and we'll be talking about that today, along with our upcoming next go-live of our recruiting and admissions project for Workday, and provide some highlights of activities that we've done between January and July of this year, and provide a glimpse into the future on ongoing activities that will continue for the ERP project. Of course, every project, there are always challenges and things that we work with as part of the project management team and leadership within JJC. Obviously, this year, we've still been working within the confines of working around COVID. Both our consultants that have been working with JJC along with all employees have been working, if in the office, still working remotely independently of meeting in large groups. Also, from a learning on demand, from how do we train our managers and our employees, we've continued to do that in a remote fashion. And of course, we've had project turnover over the last six months, both from a JJC resource perspective and our Workday implementer. And so, how do we kind of get over those challenges? Our response has been for remote work is using Microsoft Teams, similar to what we're using today, to facilitate one daily stand-up meetings to make sure that all of the team members are aware and issues are being addressed appropriately. And that's kind of helped keep the project team, even though we're all remote, we're not all sitting together or in conference rooms together working through problems, but by doing this, it gave us the ability to do that. We've also facilitated remote learning for employees and managers. It's the next best thing to being in one room and helping guide employees and managers through issues and concerns that they're having using Microsoft Teams. We've also made our training available 24/7 on a project portal, so employees are able to go out and get to information at any time if they have any concerns or want to know how to do certain business processes within the system. And as far as key team member resignations that we've gone through, our executive steering committee members have worked to, one, help reallocate resources and to fill vacant roles in a timely manner to keep the project moving forward. And at the same time, and I think what it really speaks of what we've seen is, all of the employees that have been working on the project have been picking up, you know, if there is someone that has been out, someone that, a vacant position, everyone working collectively to fill those voids and make this project a success. And with that, we have had success. Workday is live. On June 26th, our Workday HR modules all went live. That was our recruiting, our core HR benefits, time tracking, absence, and payroll system. Following that, on July 1st, beginning of the new fiscal year for JJC, our grants, banking, financials, budget, assets, procurement, supplier management, or procurement and supplier management, and expenses all went live. We've just, as of last week, completed our second payroll within Workday for all employees. We've been able to migrate all of our finance and HR transactions from the legacy system into Workday. So, as we speak today, all transactions are occurring in the new Workday system. What this has allowed us to do within JJC is reduce paper transactions. And we do that because what Workday provides is a seamless, computer-based workflow that routes all approvals. So, instead of people having to walk paper from one office to another office to get signatures, et cetera, the system manages that by utilizing routing and email notifications to our employees. Also, employees have the ability, and we have seen, we have people both using computers, smartphones, as well as tablets, to be able to access information as well as to do those approvals and approve transactions. So, again, for the JJC, for the board, you know, again, congratulations on your go-live with Workday. It has been a tremendous feat with all of the challenges that we've had over the last year and a half, but the team here at JJC was able to, again, overcome all of those challenges and meet the need of the project to actually make it and go live on time. So, as we start looking at our timeline, again, we finished the first wave or the first phase of our project, which we called the Platform Project, which was the implementation of HR and finance systems. Coming up very soon is Student Phase 1, which is primarily recruiting and admissions. And this is scheduled to go live in October of this year. So, it will be giving our prospective students, those students who are looking to apply with JJC, a new look and feel and an automated way of working through the recruiting process all the way through admissions within JJC. At the same time, starting next week, we will start the planning of Student Phase 2, which I call the Rest of Student. This will actually be all of the core products related to things like registration, financial aid, student financials, along with providing transcripts, along with financial aid-related other items and grades, et cetera. So, all of that is part of our Student Phase 2, which will, again, be a very long project, which will, as I've stated in a recent meeting, will basically impact almost every employee and, of course, all students within JJC. So, we've got our first, again, our first successful go-live for HR, payroll, benefits, and our financial systems, followed by the first wave of student, which will be in October of this year, and then another wave of Student Phase 2 that will take us through 2023, or the spring of 2023. So, over the next couple of months, obviously, for HR, payroll, and finance, we continue what we call production support of making sure that the system is meeting all of the needs of JJC as we start to transition the ownership of the system to JJC functional users. And again, that continues to happen as we continue to run payrolls and work with our vendor on the implementation. For student recruiting and admissions, we'll be focused on finalizing our testing and getting ready to make sure that all of the functionality that we've been asking for and we're asking for our students that will be, prospective students that will be using the system, that the system is meeting all of that functionality, and verifying the conversion of any data that's needed for that, for recruiting and admissions. And again, also focusing on training for those areas that will be using the system to make sure that employees are trained adequately in order to use the recruiting and admissions system as it goes live in October. And with that, that ends my presentation. Again, I'd like to thank the support of the steering committee, made up of the president's cabinet, who have given us the support for the last year and a half as we've been moving forward with this project. And again, congratulations to JJC for the successful go-live of Workday, HR, payroll, and financials. Any questions?
I do have a question. Can we go back to slide number nine, please? Thank you so much for your presentation. Wanted to just ask, can you explain what R2TA means?
This is Title IV. It's related to Title IV calculation. So, this is a, from a government perspective, of how we determine the calculation for financial aid.
Okay. Do you mean, is that like when you figure out the EFC, the Expected Family Contribution?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure. When you say this is pertaining to Title IV and how it's calculated, is this somewhat similar to when calculating the EFC, Expected Family Contribution?
I believe it is part of, that is part of the calculation. I see Dr. Farmer is shaking her head, yes. That is part of the calculation. I don't know who is speaking, but I can get the formal calculation and share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And who was that that was speaking? I?
That was trustee Morales and trustee Garcia-Guian.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have 1.1.2.
We're going to strike that this evening and bring that back following the campus police bid outcome.
Thank you. Well, next is 1.2. Moment of silence. I don't know if we have anyone who has made that formal suggestion as yet, but the way things have been recently, I think we should, we could all use a moment of silence. And so, we're also going to have, as part of this moment of silence, get my mask out of the way. Martine Lindeman, the stepfather of Michelle Lyman, Adult Education and Literacy, and Richard Lyman, Facility Services. Alice Gill, aunt of Carl Buck, college attorney. Lee Gold, retiree, processor, business education. Thank you. We have a recognition of any special guests. Nobody's even going to pretend to be special.
We're all special.
Okay. All right, thank you. Selected reports, 1.4.1.
I'd like to introduce the reader for Hispanic Month. The proclamation will be Philip Cabrelas. Philip is the president of Latinos Unidos for the 2021-2022 school year. He's in his last year at JJC and currently pursuing an Associate in Arts with a concentration in psychology. Welcome, Philip.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Here. Citizens of the Hispanic ancestry comprise a significant percentage of the residents of Illinois Community College District Number 525. It is the goal of Joliet, excuse me, I need to get some water. It is the goal of Joliet Jewelry College to provide its students with a comprehensive curricular and curricular education, experience with consideration given to its contributions of all social identified groups, groups with American history and culture. Sorry. And the contributions of the citizens of the Hispanic ancestry and the history of culture and the United States invaluable and abundant. That is the Board of Trustees in the Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois. Hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as the Hispanic Heritage Month in Illinois Community College District Number 525. Thank you.
Thank you. 1.4.2, recognition of retiree.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion for the, for the.
Sorry. Sorry. Didn't mean to get a held of myself.
I'll go second.
We have a roll, please, Joan.
Morales?
Yes.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Ann O'Connell?
Yes.
All right, now, 1.4.2. Recognition of retiree Mark Kruger. We have Mark Kruger here.
I do not believe we have retirees attending, correct, Dr. Whitehead?
All right, well, we'll name off whoever's here. They're not here, then. 1.4.3, recognition of retiree Diane Vlina?
Volda.
Volda. 1.4.4, recognition of retiree Janice Reedus. 1.4.5, recognition of retiree Robert Tuskey. 1.4.6, recognition of retiree Nancy Hay. 1.4.7, recognition, union support, report of Robert Marsink.
That's it, end at 1.4.6 for the recognitions, the next to our reports.
Okay.
You could also recognize Bob, too, so.
Yeah.
So, did I get everybody? Okay. Then 1.4.7.
What you need to call, roll on 1.1.1.
Oh, okay.
I keep forgetting to do.
2 through 6.
All right, so, we have the recognition of our retirees.
Motion.
Second.
Joan, roll, please.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Ann O'Connell?
Yes.
1.4.7.
Faculty Union report, Dr. Robert Marsink.
Dr. Bob cannot be here this evening, but we have the pleasure of welcoming Dr. Jeff Bradford. You're muted. You're muted, Jeff.
Yeah, let me do the woo-hoo again, I'm sorry. Woo-hoo! So, I am clearly not Dr. Marsink. He has more hair than I do. Bob's on vacation this week, so you're going to get me. For those of you on the board that don't know me, my name's Jeff Bradford. This is odd considering I didn't talk to Jerome about this ahead of time, but according to Workday, I've been a full-time faculty at the college for 24 years, 6 months, and 1 day as of today. As odd as it is, I started in February of '97 instead of January like most normal people do. Also, according to Workday, my length of service is 27 years, 9 months, and 18 days. Prior to my last job for JJC, I worked briefly for former trustee Andy Mahalik down at the city center campus in what's now known as Corporate Community Services. I am the current vice president of the Faculty Union as of this calendar year. And in addition to teaching industrial maintenance classes at the college, I'm also the chair of the technical department and have been for the last five years. The rest of my report will be just as brief as that. As we head into the new academic year, I wanted to acknowledge the hard work of everyone that's employed at this institution, whether it's Nancy, Barbara, Stephanie, registering students, Shaggy and his crew moving furniture, Fredo and Ginger keeping the place sanitized and spotless. I appreciate their efforts and everyone else at the school that keeps things humming along. What has been solidified in my mind over the last year and something I've really known for my entire JJC career is that every one of us knows why we're here, is students. Without them, we don't have the jobs that we have and the careers that many of us love. We have shown collectively as an institution that what drives us is our passion to serve our students regardless of job classification, and frankly, we do a really good job. So, on behalf of my full-time faculty colleagues, we're looking forward to the year ahead and we're looking forward to working with our colleagues across the institution and furthering student success. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Is it, is it?
Full time.
Is it Dr. Bradford?
It is. Dr. Mitchell and I went to school together. We graduated a year apart.
We did. We did.
All right, congratulations.
Thanks.
1.4.8, the Adult Faculty Union report, I think is.
Laurel isn't available this evening.
All right. That's for the minutes of the 1.5. 1.5.1, approval of the minutes of the regular monthly meeting from 23/21.
I'm moved. Second.
Joan, call a roll, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Ann O'Connell?
Yes.
1.5.2, review of the Board of Retreat Notes of June 16th, 2021.
I'm moved. Second.
Joan, roll, please.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Ann O'Connell?
Yes.
1.6, any communications?
No further communications, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. 1.7, closed session. We'll have a closed session under 2C1, and after that, we'll return to public session. So, you're just in time.
Hey, traffic got me here. Make a move.
I'm moved. Second.
Joan, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Ann O'Connell?
Yes.
We're good.
Okay.
We're good?
Yep.
All right, we've returned to public session. I have this short statement I'd like to read before we go any further. As many of you know, Dr. Mitchell is currently set to retire on December 31st, 2021. On behalf of the board, I would, I want to update our college community and the community at large on the board's process of choosing the president of a Joliet Junior College. The board has decided upon a presidential search and a process, and we know it has been a long time coming. Please know that the board has considered the decisions about, over the last few months at numerous meetings to ensure we are implementing a comprehensive search because we know how important it is for the president's position to be filled. We will share more of this process in the coming weeks. In order to complete a proper search, we have asked President Mitchell to consider extending her effective retirement date. It is important to the board and Dr. Mitchell that the college maintains stability and while the search is completed. The board and Dr. Mitchell are evaluating the options and will update everyone as soon as the decision is reached. Furthermore, as a board, we have discussed at length the proper support a JJC president needs to be successful and engaged in the community. This is a new concept that developed as part of the board's president's search conversations. It will be credited, critical for Dr. Mitchell to be a part of this dialogue and ensure any new organizational leadership changes support what is best for the situation. Agenda item 2.1.5, which recommends the approval of an executive vice president position, will be moved to a later board meeting. Any questions? If there's no questions, then we'll proceed to 1.9, approval of the agenda.
I'm moved with the removal of the 2.1.6, is that what we're doing? 2.1.5.
Right.
Second.
Joan.
Broderick.
Aye.
Budzinski.
Yes.
Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Lee. Lee? Michelle?
Yeah. Sorry, I was trying to unmute.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morellis?
Yes.
And O'Connell.
Yes. 1.1.0, consent agenda.
This is where we pull something if we want something pulled, right?
Mm-hmm.
For discussion?
Yep.
Okay.
But you need a motion and a second first.
I'd like to, a motion to pull.
Hold on, first you, it's a motion to approve the consent agenda, second, and then you make your request.
I'm moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Is that right?
Correct. What did you want to pull, trustee?
Yeah, sure, I'd like, um, to pull 2.1.1, um, 2.2.1, 2.2.2. And I had questions on 421 and 423. So, 4 items. I'm sorry, 1, 2, 3, 5 items.
Okay.
All right. So, the first one you have is 2.1.
O'Connell, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the, the items that I have pulled by trustee are 2.1.1, 2.2.1, 2.2.2, 4.2.1, and 4.2.3. So, subject to those items being pulled, the rest of the consent agenda is, uh, motion and second for approval.
Thank you.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a roll.
We already had the motion. We need the vote.
Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Lozano.
Yes.
Mahalik.
Yes.
Morellis.
Yes.
Broderick.
Aye.
Budzinski.
Yes.
And O'Connell.
Yes.
Okay, um, 2.1.1.
We need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
President recommends approval of correction to title of interim associate dean arts and sciences. We're, you're recommending to change the title?
No, we just need a clarification, last month it came to the Board, or in June it came to the Board to appoint interim dean of arts and sciences, it was not an, the dean position, it was the associate dean position. The associate dean is a new position created during the budget process, it was a reallocation of a grant manager position to create this, the role of associate dean. So, Heidi Muncy was appointed associate dean, so this is a correction for that. Um, and then there's a recommend, there, you have a recommendation tonight to appoint the permanent dean, the new dean of arts and sciences, and then once this individual is hired, we will move forward with posting the associate dean position.
So, the dean is what's, it was an associate, but now it's really a dean?
No, 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 it was always an associate dean, the associate piece was left off.
Okay.
So, it wasn't the dean, so it's just a correction of her temporary appointment.
So, was, this is the position I think I questioned on, in my email to you about having, it was, there was a search and then it was closed, and then it was reopened?
That's the dean position, that's 4, that's 2.1.3, or, um, 2.1.4.
Okay. Um, then I don't have any further discussion on 2.1.1?
Okay.
Well, you gotta take the vote on 2.1.1.
Say that again?
There needs to be a vote on 2.1.1. It's motioned and seconded.
I'd like to motion the approval of 2.1.1?
We already have a motion and a second.
Second. Who's gonna second?
It's already been motioned and seconded, that's why we're talking about it, so you're good to go.
Yes.
So, now we just need the roll call.
Okay.
Joan, please.
Morellis?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Next.
Sure, so 2, 2.1, and 2, 2.2 kind of are together because I wanna compare, so, like, 2 motion, right?
You, you, you got it, you can, you can do them in 1 motion, that's fine.
Okay.
So, you need a motion to approve 2.2.1 and 2.2.2.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
So, 2.2.1, we are, um, it's faculty and we're recommending to approve the appointment of 1 full-time assistant professor, technical tenure track. And actually, these are, um, the departments are the same for both. Uh, appointment of 1 full-time assistant professor, technical, and the tenure track for 2.2.1 and 2.2.2. My question is this, um, Dr. Mitchell, when we look at the salaries of, of individuals, um, one thing that I know you are very good about informing us is looking at the turnover in our staff. We wanna make sure that we're hiring, you know, qualified staff and paying them appropriately so that they stay, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I look at 2.2.1, um, I look at the education, I look at the experience for both. But 2.2.1 has 1 associate's degree. 2.2.2 have 2 associate's degrees and a BA. And they have 4 years of experience, where 2.2.1, they have 17 years of experience. 2.2.1 is a male, 2.2.2 is a female. And I get, but the steps are so different, and I'm, I'm concerned because I'm always looking at equity processes when, in our hiring practices, and we have a male and a female, very, um, a lot of similarities, but yet the male is put in our step 11 and a female is put in step 2 for salaries.
Correct.
And, and, and the female has 3 degrees.
So, they are, the, the, the faculty contract dictates the salary for each individual. The, for faculty, it's, it's different than what we do for, you know, our other union positions or non, non-union. So, all of the, um, their accreditation and their, their credentials are reviewed and looked at and compared to the union contract. So, as far as the discrepancy in the steps and the columns, there, I mean, I don't wanna say discrepancy, it's just that they are, they are paid in accordance with what is required for that specific faculty member. So, as an associate professor, in addition to their, their educational background, so I don't, Dr. Whitehead, I'm actually gonna turn to you from, you know, the HR perspective if you wanna expand on that a little bit more, if you would like me to call on Dr. Gray, I could do either one.
I was gonna say, actually, a little bit of both, that, that is exactly right, that we look at the column, we look at the step that's in the contractual agreement, we look at, these are 2 different roles, one is orthotics and prosthetics and one is the technician position, so they're not exactly the same. So, we look at the, the roles themselves, and I would also turn to Dr. Gray to give any additional academic information, but there's, if your question is, is there an inequity and because of gender, if that's what I kinda hear your question is?
Education and experience too.
And, and it's not, based on our contractual agreement, and the experience of both of these candidates, we followed it to the T. So, from that perspective, I think we, you know, I think we met a little bit and went through an overview a couple of weeks ago to walk through this, and I think that, um, Dr. Mitchell had mentioned, moving forward, maybe doing some more education on the contracts on that side of the House so that you can see the difference, but if you're asking us if we allow, like, a gender inequity in this particular case, I would say no.
And see, and because there's a lot of things we don't see, what I do see is department, I see title is the same, department is the same, um, but I see that the male has less education and the female has a lot more, but yet is being paid a lot less, and that, that's just what, what we're given, so I can only go off of the data that I see here. And it just, I, I feel like if we're gonna retain staff, we need to pay them accordingly, and this, um, 2.2.2 female probably should be, be, being paid better, or we're gonna lose this person.
So, you led into, this is why we need to do a compensation study comprehensively, but as it stands today, we have to offer salaries from an equitable perspective based on our contract. And based on these 2 positions, we, you know, have a process for that, and neither of these individuals were, um, positioned in an inequitable way.
So, one is orthotics and the other one is what was that?
One is automotive and one is orthotics and prosthetics, so they're both in the same department, the technical department?
Mm-hmm.
Same role.
Same, different roles, different requirements, sometimes, you know, there are different skills, if it's a transfer course versus non-transferable, so all of that is looked at when they're evaluated, but they are in a, paid in accordance with the contract. Now, you know, something that we can do, Dr. Whitehead, going forward, is put a little bit more of an explanation in the Board book, so you have that.
Yeah.
Um, and then we always encourage you, all of our union contracts are posted on the HR website, so you have those, and I believe you each have a copy, um, of the new contracts as well.
Okay. Well, I think they're probably both great candidates, I just feel like the woman is not being paid enough. Sorry, that's just my opinion.
No, and no, and it, you know, and it is, it's, you know, it's perception, but, you know, again, we have to follow the contract as well. So, but we will be more inclusive going forward.
Okay, that, that was all that, uh, observation I wanted to point out.
Okay.
So, do we need to do another roll call?
Yeah, you have to take a vote on 2.2.1 and 2.2.2, and it's been motioned and seconded, so.
Do you want them separate or together?
You can do it together.
Broderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Michelle?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morellis?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
So, we have 1 more?
You have 2 more, 4.2.1.
4.2.1, um, I know I asked a question about this, about.
You have to make a motion.
Sorry, I'm gonna need a motion, a second.
So moved?
Second.
Yep.
Um, sorry, let me find this in my JJC email here, 'cause I think we just, I, I asked about this late, and I know that it responded, I had not had a chance to look at the response, so, this was for. Yes, um, hold on, 4.2.1.
I know you're, I remember your question, I just don't know if it's this.
I think it was a procurement, um.
You're looking at the bids?
You had asked about the.
The bids?
Yeah, it's, um.
The reporting on each one of those in your email.
Yeah.
The formatting.
I apologize?
No problem.
Okay. So, we're recommending, we were recommending a company, Husser Abatement, to provide those vessels, because they were the lowest bidder, but the other 3 bidders, we didn't have their amounts. And I like to see what other bids came in at, and when we're making a recommendation and we're being asked to vote, um.
Their, their amounts are on there.
No, oh, yes, they are, this, these are, hold on, what was it? Um, let me ask.
Your original question, um, 4.2.1 and 4.2.3 were that their formatting was different, but one is a bid and one is a consortium.
Correct, so can you tell me a little bit more and what, why is a consortium, why does that format not allow to show, like, the separate bids, like, the one we did for 4.2.1?
Because it's not the same process, and I'm gonna turn to Cecil Lucy, uh, he and Janice put together that response, and I just wanna make sure that it's all-inclusive, so, um, Cecil, I'm not sure if you're on or Janice Reedus, if you could explain a little bit more or expand on your email?
Yeah, this is Cecil, good afternoon, President Mitchell, trustees. The consortium process is a different process that we follow, so in other words, for a consortium situation, there are only certain vendors that are able to give us the type of product that we're asking for. In this case, we're looking at a Microsoft campus agreement, and so, given the list of this consortium providers, the, the objective is we have relationships, and so the issue is, is getting the types of terms that are gonna give us the lowest pricing for a number of years, like, in this case, we're looking at a 3-year consortium contract pricing point. So, it's just a different process that we follow.
Right, so, and let me just expand a little bit, so, 4.2.1 is a bid, that is, you know, we have our policies and procedures in place to go out and, you know, for, um, normal, for all campus procurement, anything $25,000 and over has to go out for bid, and then we come to the Board. For construction, it's $50,000. For this one specifically, the bid, it's over $25,000, so we come to the Board, you know, as noted in there, 958 vendors notified, 566 were BEP, 4 bids were received, and a lot of times, it depends on what the specific work is. And, and our bid categories are extensive, so, if you say you're a contractor, there could be 1,500 contractors and they're, and they all have various services that they provide. So, in this specific instance, we had 4 responses, and Husser Abatement was the lowest, um, so we say low bid of $82,000 as compared to the other 3 listed. When you look to a consortium, so a consortium is, it's something that, and you look in your email, a consortium is a group, group procurement, okay? So, we are allowed through the Illinois Procurement and Community College Act to sign up with, you know, or to utilize consortiums, so it's a group bid, it's like purchasing in a large power, so it's not just Juilliard Junior College, it's, you know, they're buying for the state of Illinois, and this, that could be this consortium, we have IPEC, we have ENI, there are multitudes that we can, we can select from. We went to the Board for approval years ago just to say that this is a process that we have. When it's advantageous for us to use a consortium, we look to them because, again, it's stronger buying power, you know, we can, you know, you have references, they've done the homework already, so we're very selective, and Janice and her team are very selective when they look at that. Then, there's the RFP process, that was one of yours, a request for proposal is 1 step above a bid. So, a request for proposal is usually for goods and services, so not only is a vendor evaluated based on their price, they're evaluated based on their services and what they provide to the organization. So, when you look at an RFP, it is gonna look different in the Board book, but look at the details in there to say what the criteria was that we used to evaluate, because at times, the lowest bid is, in a proposal, is not always best.
Right.
Because if they don't provide all the services to a company, you're, you're out.
Right.
So, so there's, so there's a difference between each process, and so, that's what I, you know, just encourage you to look at the consortium, RFP, bid, and that will help explain, and then, you know, at any time if you have questions, um, let us know, and contractual service, that's one other one, just real quick to touch on. Contractual service, we actually have, again, jurisdiction within the, uh, Community College Act to look at specific, for instance, our legal firm, professional services, they have a, a different criteria, a different set to look at, so, we can look at that as well for sole source or something like that.
That was gonna be my next question, the sole source, okay.
Yes, yep, mhm.
So, that, thank you for that, I appreciate it, and, um, that pretty much answered 421 and 423?
Okay, great.
So, I guess we can go ahead and take a vote?
4.2.1, that's the motion, it's up.
Broderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee? Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morellis?
Yes.
And O'Connell?
Yes.
Now, 4.2.3?
So moved?
One more motion.
I need a second.
I moved.
Second.
Discussion?
No, she answered both of them when her response.
Take the roll.
Broderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morellis?
Yes.
And O'Connell?
Yes.
Moving on.
This one, because this was not on the consent, 6.1, your approval of the search, if you agreed on the search.
Well, we mentioned it earlier, but, uh, is, uh, 6, uh, new business, 6.1, approval of a presidential search process, and we discussed that. So, if we have no further discussion about it, uh, we'll move on to number 7. New business, first reading of Board policies.
Well, new business, old business, can we bring something, oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Whenever you're ready.
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna read something that I think, I, I'm just gonna bring this up in new, no business, just so we all have a handle.
All right, then do it.
Thank you, sorry I was late tonight, but as we all know, the meeting got changed, and I'm just refreshing everybody, so, you all know that I'm the vice chair, but just the duties of the vice chair on the Board, the vice chairperson shall temporarily assume the duties of the chairperson and chair, and shall have the same powers as the chairperson in the absence of the chairperson of the Board. absence of the chairperson of the board. So if we need to move meetings again, the chair, the vice, if the chair's not here, and the chair can't make the meeting, and I know next week you have your vacation, I know we changed it because of that, my work schedule was already out there, so I'm just saying that it would be nice to trust the vice chair to be there to run the meetings if you're not, and that's all I'm mentioning, thank you.
All right. Reports?
Under the, oh, you're doing old business, can we talk about any of the readings of the policies?
Talking does not seem to be a shortcoming here, you want to talk about something, go ahead.
Okay, 8.1, under nepotism, I know it's under a second read, and do I address it to you, Carl, or to Judy?
I don't know what your question is.
My question is this, because I was reading the whole nepotism thing, but I also think there should be an inclusion, and let me get back to the page that I had, where my fingers were at, so bear with me for a second. Under nepotism. Under nepotism, it specifies, includes action by a college member that directly influences the college employment, hiring, promotion, supervision, evaluation, determination of salary, or academic progress. I think it should also include any financial considerations that are, I think, a financial situation where somebody may write a check, because I don't see that here that gives approval for financial decisions made, and I think if someone is making a financial decision on something that they're aware of nepotism, that should be inclusive.
Which paragraph are you looking at?
I'm looking at the nepotism definition.
Oh, okay, right at the top.
Because.
Generally, and generally, trustee Broderick, nepotism relates to the issues, how am I going to say, generally, of employment and connections within people within the college, which you're talking about is usually covered by the State Gift Ban Act and the Ethics Act, so if there's a conflict of interest, you know, so if you, I'm sorry, so if you were, you know, if you owned a company as a trustee, and you owned a company, and the college was going to do business with that company, that wouldn't be nepotism per se, that would be under the ethics, you'd have to recuse yourself, and the college would have to go through a process for that. So that's usually covered under the ethics side, it's not nepotism, nepotism is within ourselves.
Okay.
And what you're talking about is generally outside, so involving a third party.
Okay, so that's a third party, but that would be covered under something else?
Yeah, it's covered under the State Ethics Act.
State Ethics Act that would cover it, okay, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, fair question.
Because I wanted to make sure we were inclusive, so if we find something that's going on internally, that if there is nepotism, that we do have an idea of how to cure or protect the environment of the college.
Yeah, as you can see from this, we've gone through a thorough review of this policy.
Okay, that's good, I'm good with that.
Who decides when these, who picks these policies, because if we are a policy board, I don't remember the board being asked to review any of these, that were handed, and this is what's going to be, it's dictated what we're going to review, versus, I don't know, like, who makes the decision that these are the ones that are going to be going up for review?
I can respond to that. We have a cycle, a four-year cycle for all of our policies and procedures, the board does have input, you have first read, second read, third read, so that's your opportunity for that. You also know that we just created the new policy committee as well, and I believe you and trustee Lee are serving on that committee, or no, trustee Garcia-Guian.
No, I think it's trustee Lee and myself, but I haven't heard from.
Okay, so Dr. Morris, Dr. Irvin, and I have talked, they put together their talking points, and now, Dr. Morris is on vacation, it's summer, everyone's trying to take their last minute vacations, but the next step would be to set up that meeting with you both and discuss the process, what that looks like, you know, what the priorities are, obviously the first ones would be for the specific ones tied to the board.
Okay.
And then talk about that process, so I have seen the draft, I know they're ready to go, they're just waiting for Dr. Morris to return from vacation.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And then I'll throw in, oftentimes, you know, there's a change in the law, so even if it's outside your cycle, if we get a change in the law, then we bring the, we make the change, and we put the policy in, and it goes through one, two, three read, you know, we don't, even if we, even if it's a change in the law and we have to do it.
Right.
We still go through our one, two, three read process.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I was under the same impression as, is that we were going to be contacted and kind of to talk to about what we, the policy board was, since it was a new board, so thank you, President Mitchell, for letting us know that due to vacations and everything, it will be happening, you said most likely next month?
Yeah, I would think shortly, I'll reach out to Dr. Irvin to make sure we get it on your calendar, and then I know the same for the finance committee, we'll work in on the same thing, so we're just trying to get through summer, but yeah, they will be scheduled, both meetings.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Number nine, reports.
Christie. Christie Mulvey.
9.1, JJC Foundation report. Christie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Good evening. JJC's Athletic Foundation Golf Outing will be held next Friday, August 13th, at Enwood. I am very pleased to say we are sold out, and this is the largest attendance in the history of our golf outing. Scrap the Gap is now closed, and we are in the process of awarding $100,000 to 200 first-time JJC students for the fall semester. The foundation made these funds available through the Vera Smith Endowment to help enrollment at the college. We're doing a photo shoot on August 17th with several of our scholarship recipients. These photos and stories gathered will be used for solicitations both on social media and in direct mail appeals. Three months ago, we expanded our employee giving campaign by offering an opportunity each month called Basket of the Month Club, and each month, we solicit a special clause to our employees for our employees to support. We've raised quite a few additional funds doing this, and we keep the momentum going throughout the year rather than having just a yearly campaign. So far, we have raised additional funds for student emergency, the Richard Rivera Memorial Scholarships, and last month, the Police and Community Engagement Fund. This past year, as we work remotely due to COVID, my team raised $1 million over what we did the previous year in annual contributions. I'm pleased to announce that all scholarships will be on each and every student's account before the first drop date. The next Foundation Board meeting is Wednesday, August 18th, at 7:30 a.m. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Christie, please tell the board that we are very appreciative of what you and the whole Foundation Board keeps doing for the entire school and all the students here. It's outstanding, it's outstanding.
I will, thank you.
Yes, Christie, keep those cards and letters coming in. 9.2, Representative of the ICCTA.
Okay, this is kind of really short, because we're having an early meeting before we have my big meeting with the executive group of the ICCTA, because of course, July was definitely an off month for everybody, including us, but I have my executive retreat with ICCTA 819, 820, and 821, that will be over in Kauanee, and I'm excited to find out what the results of what our goals are going to be for 2021 to 2022, and I will bring that back to the board at our next meeting. Also, I understand that most of us have signed up for the ACCT Conference, which is from October 12th to October 16th in San Diego. Good learning experience, start looking for information that's going to start coming across about what's going to be offered, they're going to start putting that out in the first week in September, so start watching for the classes and things that you want to go to. And then, I want to read something that came back, because I am so happy that you guys took the suggestion of having the retreat, I got to say, I was excited to see all of you guys working with Mr. Reed, and this is what he said, he wanted to thank the whole board and staff for being a part of what he thought was a very important retreat. The board's engagement reflects its commitment to serve Joliet Junior College and the communities which it serves. Additionally, the timely responses to the board survey, he greatly appreciated. As indicated at the meeting, he's providing a letter summation of what we did and what we're going to do over the next year. JJC Board Survey revealed that the trustees believe their strengths are understanding the mission and the support of the college, that is a key thing to know. We are knowledgeable about the college major services, and the board members respect the confidentiality of executive sessions of when we go into executive session. Other areas of additional conversation and information that were beneficial is timeliness of dissemination of board information, information in advance on topics maybe discussed or presented at the board meetings, and he did talk about having us timely get to our board president with questions that we have on meetings, so that it's prior to the 48 hours prior to our meeting. The issues of trustees being able to fully engage during the pandemic and this time of limited committee meetings was expressed, but didn't appear to be an issue that affected their ability to serve the college. Processes and protocols for adding items to the board of agenda and committee agendas was there. Strategies for outreach to the high school district, the superintendents, and the board members. Review template for the CEO evaluation instrument, which both Jim and Alicia will be responsible for working with us on Dr. Mitchell's evaluation. The preferred composition of the Presidential Search Committee, he was very impressed on how we were going to handle the Presidential Search. It is noteworthy the trustees were very candid and open with their comments, which was great, you guys opened up, that's what he wanted to see, he wanted us to be real. There are issues that still need to be dealt with, so the board can function as a full team, because every time we have a new election, we have new board members, it's a new team. In my opinion, that was a very productive board retreat, the trustees want to be informed as they proceed with their Presidential Search process, I think President Mitchell has been very proactive in helping to educate the board about many facets of the job that will need to be considered as they deliberate and ultimately vote on who will lead the college. So that was Jim Reed's position, and I think that it was necessary for us all to hear it, because he's the one that did the evaluation, and he says he looks forward to us doing annual, because he said we did agree to do, board agrees to annually do the annual board retreat to reflect on the progress that they are making and what they plan to do going forward. Thank you, that ends my report.
Thank you. 9.3, Student Trustee Report.
So thank you, everyone, good evening, I hope you guys had a good summer, I know I did, so we'll just kind of get started, I don't have too much to talk about today, since it was summer, as you all know, so. Forgot the clicker, give me a second.
Is that? Clicker's not working.
I'm aiming it there.
Why?
Yeah, yeah, you just, okay. Yeah, go ahead, you can slide, okay. So my outline, what I'm going to talk about today is the meet the student trustee dates, the LEDA internships, the trustee show, update with the Tutoring and Learning Center, summer club activity, and then some past events that happened in between while we were on break. So in order to get to know the students and what their needs are at the moment, I decided to do some dates where I'm going to be tabling, and I'm going to actually have a survey for them to do, like a little barcode to scan, have you ever seen those, kind of like that? The survey's still in works, I have it done, it's still in review right now, a couple people are looking at it, but I'm going to be tabling on those dates right there, as you can see, but I also have some other dates I'm going to be tabling, which I'll get to you as well, during like Main Street and Welcome Week and things like that, so this is kind of like my form of reaching out to the students, kind of get to know them, and see what issues there are, see what their needs are. And then, I've also been kind of working on this as well, so I've been kind of working with this, it's a newly, a new organization, I guess you can call in Joliet, it's called LEDA, or Latino Economic Development Association, so I'll just read you, this is from, straight from their website, it's, LEDA is committed to advancing economic opportunities for Latino businesses and individuals by creating and connecting them to educational, cultural, and civic resources to expand community prosperity. So they're focused on mainly the Joliet area community, mostly small businesses, not just Latino, I know it's in their mission statement, but I've talked to them personally, they're all about small businesses. So I know the E-Board there, and they were very adamant on, you know, working with me and trying to get some internships opened up for business students, so they're going to give JJC first dibs on our students, so I'm working with Mr. Bill O'Connor, Ms. Michelle Meyer in the Business Department, trying to get their, trying to get some recommendations for students to fill those positions, so hopefully we can get some real, real-world experience for some business students out there, so that's one thing I'm working on right now, still in the works, hopefully have an update for you next time.
Can you also get that out to the local chambers, because the chambers would love to help you with internships?
Mm-hmm.
The local chambers, because they have kids that come in, the students that come in that are looking, and they have them on their website, too.
Yeah, I think, well, I think the whole thought was to get JJC students first, that's what I think it was, then if they don't fill the spots, or, you know, something happens or we can't participate anymore, then they would, you know, start putting it everywhere, social media, Twitter, things like that, so they're giving us first dibs, so I was like, okay, we'll take it, you know?
I need interns at Allstate, I'm a small business owner, I need interns.
See, so, yeah, and they're, like I said, they're just starting out, I think they just got their, what's it called, they just, like I said, I think they just started around April.
Yes.
So it's new, I think maybe some of you have heard of them before, but they're very new, I thought, you know, is a chance to kind of help them grow, kind of grow with them, I know JJC were very big, I'm trying to get us more in the community, and I thought, I saw this as an opportunity, so work in there, if you want to click the next slide. And then I'm also going to announce this, I'm also going to be doing kind of like a TV show, in a sense, where I'm going to be interviewing different departments, students, and kind of, it's going to be kind of a talk show setting, I guess you can call it, and that's what I'm going to be doing to kind of show students what resources JJC has, because I feel like a lot of them, especially now, when a lot of them are at home or doing hybrid, they just kind of come and they go real quick, they don't kind of get the JJC experience that I used to have when I first started, and this will give them the opportunity to see what's available, what we do well at JJC, and give them that experience that they somewhat can't have right now because of COVID, so I'm kind of excited to do that, I'll be working with Jake, big shout out to Jake, he's been working with me on this, and I think it's going to be cool, I think it's going to be fun, and I already got a little area selected, it's going to have a couch and everything, so if you, just think of Jimmy Kimmel, but with, Jimmy Kimmel Live, but with me, so it's going to be great. But yeah, so that's kind of my idea there, it's another kind of way to get students' attention and get my name out there, so they know who to come to, to reach out to, and kind of just have fun with it, and show off JJC a little bit, so.
That's awesome.
Oh, thank you.
Is that available on other media?
Coming to Amazon Prime. No, I think Microsoft Teams, it'll probably, it'll be probably sent out a similar format to how board meetings are sent out, but I'm going to work on it, I'm going to try to get it out there more, I'm going to probably try to promote it hard, probably Instagram, Twitter. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to Jake, we're going to, we're going to figure it out, and, you know, just, because you know, it's a fun little thing, and I think it'll, it'll give a different perspective on JJC that some people don't see all the time. And then the Tutoring and Learning Center update, I know last time I talked to you all about how they were trying to kind of get more people, trying to expand it basically, trying to get more people to go to the Tutoring and Learning Center and just forget the stigma of, oh, I'm failing a class, so then I go. I actually took a tour there last, and it was two weeks ago, and it was great, I have to say, I'm very impressed on all the resources they offer there, I was, wow, and you know, I got to talk to some of the student tutors, and I was working with Elizabeth Bell, she's a supervisor there, and she's willing to do tours for any trustees, so if you guys are interested, let me know, I can get you guys in contact, or I'm sure Dr. Mitchell can, too. But I really, I really want to help promote them, because I think they can really help students, no matter where you're at in your classes, if you just want a place to study, or you just want, or you want to, you know, change your B to an A, even if you're doing fine in a class, so. One idea I had that she really liked was to have her speak at a CCC meeting, not only about the resources that they offer at the TLC, but also to speak on, do a short presentation to student leaders, as you know, the Collegiate Club Council consists of all the student leaders from every club, and basically, the presentation will consist of a, I guess I would call it a presentation regarding how to balance club duties and homework, things like that, which is something all student leaders struggle with, and I used to struggle with it all the time. So, yeah, that's one way, and then hopefully she'll be a guest on my show, once it happens, so. on my show, once it happens. So, that's kind of the idea of helping them get out there. But that's what I got so far. Again, I'm, it's still going to be an ongoing process with them, and hopefully, we can keep expanding it.
You have your hands full, but that is an awesome idea.
Oh, thank you.
And the tutoring is definitely will help us tremendously with retention.
Yeah, for sure. And like I said, we have a bunch of resources there. They have the models. I, like I said, I toured the whole thing. It's great. They have everything. They even have the books for the classes.
That's the only reason I graduated. I'll admit it. Serious.
There you go. Tutoring Learning Center. And then, I also want to give a shout out to the Art Club. They are actually doing this wonderful mural here. It's actually going to be unveiled, when was it? August 20th, from four to five. They did a mural of dogs and pets. And I thought it was really cool that they were doing that. It looks great, too, from what I'm seeing so far, and I can't wait to see when it's all finished. So, big shout out to the Art Club, doing a great job from what I'm seeing.
Where do we see it at?
Um, I can't remember where it's at. It's-
Inside the Vet Tech area. So, I don't know if you can, you'd have to go enter through the inside to get out. It's locked.
Yeah. They, like I said, August 20th, they're going to unveil it. So, if you want to see it completed, yeah. I'm gonna, it's Friday. I'm going to probably go. I have nothing going on, so I'm definitely going to head there to check it out. It looks very nice so far. So, good job, guys, fellow clubs out there. And then, just some OSA events that happened. We had What Does Community Mean with Dean Cindy Vazquez Barrios. We had The History of Our Divide with Lisa Espinosa. What's Trending on Social Media with Social Justice Club. Activism in Action with Devon Cooley. Just kind of these events. I won't go too far into them, but they focus mostly on the social justice issues going on. And, you know, the, the staff, I gotta give a shout out to them. A lot of them are, you know, helping get this conversation going, and can, and they do see a need for it. So, that's why they continue to talk about it, and they provide that space for students to just, you know, feel free to just speak on what, what they're feeling in this time right now, as we know a lot has gone on. So, yeah, and that's just a picture of one of the events that was the What's Trending on Social Media. And I was actually at one of a, I was a speaker for that one, one of the speakers, with Christina Armamento. Shout out to you. And, yeah, it went very well. So, these are just a couple events. And then, we also have, this was a really big one, Paint and Picnic. I've never felt more relaxed in my life. I've never painted. It's like, if you ever had like one of those painting parties with your friends or something, it was like that. They, they brought a teacher over. They, we had a painting. We painted it. And it was really nice. I didn't, you know, you didn't, I didn't focus on anything. I just focused on the painting. Let the, let the spirit guide my brush, you know? And it's good. Sometimes you just need that, you know, just to let go a little bit. And again, we didn't have a huge group, but it was, it was super nice, super relaxing. I've never done anything like it before. And that's the thing I like about OSA events like this, is that it gets you out of your comfort zone and lets you try things you don't usually do. So, I was able to paint. I was actually quite impressed. I'm not like a physical artist. As you, some of you know I'm a musician, but I'm not a artist, artist who paints. And I did pretty decent. I wish I had a picture of mine. I'm kind of cut off. I'm in the corner right there. But yeah, it went very well. Very good outcome. I, the picnic part, I had a Subway sandwich. So, yeah, that's, went pretty good. And then, Wellness Wednesdays, again, focusing on the mental health aspect. Student Wellness and OSA kind of partnered with, with these events. I didn't, I wasn't able to attend these, but again, these events focused on personal kind of hygiene, mental health, and just taking care of yourself, how to balance things in life, especially when some students are returning to campus. We just don't know how they're, if they're going to be overwhelmed. You really don't know how they're going to react, how they're going to feel. So, a lot of these events are focusing on that mental health aspect that, you know, as Dr. Mitchell mentioned, has been quite, you know, it's been a struggle. A lot of people are reporting it. So, yeah, so that's, that's a continuation of that. And big shout out to all the wellness advocates out there doing a great job. And that's my presentation. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
A great presentation. On the Wellness Wednesdays, are those here on campus, and are they during the day?
No, they're, they're online.
Oh, these are online?
Yes, they're online.
So, like a Teams meeting?
Yeah, they're a Teams meeting. Now, now, and I should mention that one of the, it was the What's Trending on Social Media. That was hybrid. So, that was, there was some people on campus, and then some people online.
For this one?
No, that was the, the previous one. The-
Advocacy activity?
Yeah, the advocacy ones. So, one, that was only one, but the rest of them have always been online.
Are we going to do more in person? Because I think that's what's driving the wellness need, is that the COVID, everyone's been isolated, and people want to get together. I know we have to be careful because we are seeing the numbers go up, but once we maybe have this under control, do you plan on offering this more like in-person on campus?
From what, from what I've been seeing, there's going to be some more in-person events, of course, with social distancing measures and everything like that, masks. But from what I, from what I saw, talking to Amy in OSA, there is going to be some more in-person events. So, and there's going to be more, there's going to be kind of, they're going to have them doubled. They'll have online and then in-person version. So, to kind of get more people. So, they're going to do them, it's going to increase. They're just kind of dipping their feet in the water with the summer.
Okay.
So, it, it, they will start having more.
Please keep scheduling the advocacy activities. I think those are very important because there's issues that people, whether they agree or disagree, I think we need to be at least sensitive to the issues that are going on and understand why, and, you know, why there, why there has to be advocacy for certain topics. So, just thank you for doing them, and keep, keep organizing them, please.
For sure. Yeah, I'll let them know, for sure. Thank you.
That's it for me.
Any other questions? Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Trustee Dave. 9.4 Building and Grounds Committee Report.
Well, we had a good meeting today. As you guys know, they, the capital development project, we finally received the approval for funding for that, so we're going to get the J Building elevators replacing up to code. Couple of projects that are finishing up. The Keyless Entry, it will be completed soon, and that's in the U Building. Parking lot ceiling is going to be completed soon. And that's good, because it'd be nice to get some students back on campus, have those parking lots nice and sealed for them. The Renaissance facade is complete. The theater is basically all completed. I think the last thing to do is just do a little tuck pointing and sealing. The bid tonight that we approved was for the Abestos Abatement. It was, the final bid amount was for $82,000. I believe we went out to 958 vendors, and we received four total bids. Obviously, taking the lowest, most qualified bid as well, $82,000. Upcoming projects, we have the Campus Police, which was, I think the final bids were turned down seven-six. There, I think 29 vendors attended the meetings, and the bids were due today. So, I don't know, we don't know how many are coming in yet, but we will be able to review that next month as well at the next meeting. Also, was it J Building? Oh, that was for the elevator. They already read off, so. We also have the City Center. Oh, the City Center is right on target for completion within the timeframe that we, that we discussed. We will be receiving, the Campus Police bids will be received today, actually, and they will be reviewed, and that will be presented to us at the next Board meeting as well. Workday is live. As we heard from Cecil earlier, it sounds like we're adjusting. Everything's going, going good. Everyone's going to acclimate to the system as well. And then, the other, NICOR has approached us to put an antenna, a tena on the City Center campus. We're in the initial discussion so far, but that's going to, just going to, they're probably going to put some rent for us, so we're going to see some rental income each month as well, moving forward, to have that. And then, Judy, also, can you discuss a little bit about the Rock Run?
Sure.
Because I have a couple of notes, but I tailed off at the end here, so.
So, Cecil Pat Van Donen, I met with the city of Joliet and IDOT earlier this week on, you know, the, the Rock Run development that's going to be to the west of the campus. And we know that they're going to, so IDOT is going to be constructing a bridge and a pedestrian crossing off of Syle Road. So, it will cross actually over I-55 in addition to the exit ramp. So, what they were wanting to do, so the exit ramp and the roadway eventually is going to connect into Olympic Boulevard up to Hobolt. What they want to do is create a bike path as well, pedestrian walk, and they're going to extend it from, from over Syle Road. It'll come over the bridge, and it will intersect, but rather than going down Olympic and connecting on Hobolt, they want the pathway to connect just to the west of the manufacturing building or the warehouse just next, just to the south of us. They'll bring the bike path up north, connect just south of the baseball field, and then to there, you can either go, you know, west, or you can continue east. The goal is, it's the safety of the pedestrians, whether you're walking or riding a bike. We're working with the Forest Preserve as well, because it's joint, you know, joint property that we work with them on, as well as the city. It will connect to Hobolt, and then eventually, so on Hobolt, you've got the bike path. And then, if you recall, the sheet that I sent to all the Board members are going to create that similar, you know, over the Divergent Diamond. So, it'll be a nice connection for all of, you know, the community to safely get around and commute through campus. So, we had our meeting last week, there were, earlier this week, they were looking for our input, and then they'll continue going forward. But we're excited. They're going to put the stoplight at the end of Rich Rivera Way. We're going to have a right turn lane going on to Olympic, and then they're going to put a right turn lane going on to our campus to increase the safety of our students traveling as well.
Judy, the person that's going to go through each spot and put signs out there, say JJC.
I am. Enroll now at JJC. I'm going to put them all these critical points all the way down the path, and say, and we have directional signs. So, we'll get them in here.
Sounds good. And I guess that, with that, that ends the BNG report.
Thank you, Trustee Mahalik.
It was nice to see you at the meeting today, too, Chairman O.
You're welcome. President's Report, 9.5.
Okay. First of all, welcome back. We've missed you over the summer. It's been great for some of us to take some time off, much-needed time, and get some rest. So, nice to see you, and we continue to move forward through the new semester. I just sent an email when we were on break to the campus community about our return on Monday, so I copied you as well. So, you should see that. And we'll continue to watch the COVID positivity rates and hope that, you know, with our PPE, we're going to continue with safety of our employees and students. One note I just want to highlight, in one of your green sheets tonight, it was actually a letter to you, or to me, from Cecil Lucy and Jeff Heap. I just asked that you pay special attention to that, because it is, there is a delay in our interim June 30 financials due to the rollout of Workday. In addition to the audit field work for our financial audit this year, a delay of three weeks. So, just make note of that, and so it doesn't just get put in your, in your packet. So, I want to begin with, over the summer, we continue with all our great work around the campus. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Nicole Whitehead. She was recently selected to serve as a new director on the Board at the Spanish Community Center. So, I'm looking forward to that positive and strengthening in our partnership with Veronica Gloria and her team as well. Kelly Roder Tinnelli recently received the Project Acclaim Award. She received the Reverend James E. Allen Award for service to the community. This award recognizes individuals or organizations who show selfless devotion of community by direct action, perform actions that have been community-wide impact, and perform actions that have enhanced the best interests of the community. Mr. Jim Sur, our CIO, presented Upgrade or Die: The Future of Higher Education at CNBC's Technology Executive Council Forum on Wednesday, July 14. The theme for the forum was transforming the workplace, cracking the hybrid code, which brought together technology executives across multiple industries. So, our team is out and about and actively engaged. So, thank you to all of them. Dean Lynn Mackey, now Dr. Mackey, completed her doctoral degree at ISU this last month. She successfully defended her dissertation entitled How African-American Community College Learners Succeed, and earned her PhD in Higher Education Administration. So, not only did she earn a very high praise for her work, she did this during the pandemic while putting many extra hours supporting JJC. Again, another inspiration to our campus community. Over the summer, the Office of DEI and C prepared, partnered with various departments, Campus Police, Student Wellness, Offices Student Activities, Human Resources, Fine Arts, Nursing, OMSA, et cetera, to train employees in leading cultural competency workshops and peace-restorative justice circles at JJC. This fall, 12 employees will continue facilitating the CCW for all adjunct faculty, new employees, and for those who do not previously complete the workshop. Again, this was mandatory and mandated for all employees at the college. HR successfully migrated reporting requirements to Workday, enabling demographic employee search, hiring, exit data, all to be extracted for operational strategic planning. So, we'll have those reports right at our fingertips. They provided multiple employee training sessions for acclimation to Workday, posted new jobs in Workday. So, we're transitioning from People Admin to Workday, and helping team process mapping sessions to begin and review each policy and procedure for improved employee experience and best practices. And our VP of Finance and Administration, on July 1, you've heard we went live with Workday Finance Modules, Grants, Baking, Financials, Budgets, Fixed Assets. All of our employees are paid. Everyone's happy. You know, you heard Dr. Bradford talking about, you know, just the, it's so easy to use. So, if you ever would like to come in and see what it's all about, we would be happy to give you a demonstration. It's an amazing, amazing transition. Our VP of Student Development, staff members from the Center of Multicultural Access and Success participated in a two-day retreat over the summer. The CMAS mission and vision articulate a holistic, equitable, and student-focused plan. They strive to provide transformational services, experiences, advocacy, and support for historically underserved students to encourage academic success, personal growth, collegiate persistence, and graduation. So, thank you to our Board for your support as we continue to transfer and transition, again, always meeting the needs of our students. And then, just one year after JJC was featured on the national, just one year after JJC was featured in our National Community College Daily Magazine for our crisis response to the pandemic, we are now going to be on the cover for the upcoming August/September issue in Taking Action on Equity, published by the American Association of Community Colleges. I had the pleasure of interviewing with Ed Finkel earlier this summer. So, again, it highlights the great work at Joliet Junior College that continues year-round. Our Board Ambassador Program, so I know the Board has, has expressed interest in reaching out to our high school districts. Kelly Roder has done great work. She pulled together all the Board meeting dates, the times, the school districts, and she is on vacation this week. So, our plan will be to present this to the Board in September, knowing that we're not rushing back into it to allow all the high school districts to get settled and back in place. Again, I mentioned our employees' return on Monday, so we're looking forward to seeing more faces. And finally, I would like to have Chief Campbell introduce our new, one of our new employees to the college, Commander Tracy Williams. Chief, if you'd like to stand up. Tracy, just share a little bit about his background as we continue to rebuild our Campus Police Department.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. So, I would like to introduce Tracy. Tracy comes to us from the Evanston Police Department, where he served for 29 years. While there, Tracy spent his career in the Gang Unit, Detective Bureau, Homicide Task Force, and ultimately, the Traffic Division, where he commanded this unit. While there, Tracy oversaw and was Incident Commander for all Northwestern University Game Day operations, special events, and other large-scale events. Tracy is the recipient of the Northwestern Staff in Command Frank Krimmel Award for a leadership which was founded to, quote, "recognize and encourage the high ethical and professional values and dedication to public service upon the center for which the public safety was founded." Welcome aboard.
Can I make one comment, too?
Yes, you can.
And it wasn't mentioned, but I went to the Fourth of July, and Brandon, you did a phenomenal job orchestrating that whole Fourth of July. As I called it, a traffic kazoo, because it was a traffic mess. But you, internally, all of JJC was phenomenal. I think, Jim, you were there, too? I gotta say, it was the best. It worked out. You guys had us orchestrated well. I just think that improvement on the other force could have helped make the exit a lot easier, and you know, because I shared my, my concerns. But I wanted to say, it was his birthday, too.
Right.
And he did all this, and I thought, you did a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just want to say how proud of him are our employees. Although we lose some, you know, some, you know, history with those retired, or those that choose to move on, we continue to hire quality employees that, that work with the institution. Chief has been amazing since the first day on campus. His department is rebuilding. The positivity is just, you know, I continue to hear all good things. So, I just want to thank you to all our employees, because many of them kept working throughout the summer, Workday, the countless hours. So, continued great work. So, thank you. That concludes my report.
Can I ask one question about the Workday thing, though?
Sure.
As you brought up about before the timing. Is the Workday implementation behind now?
No. So, we were- No. So we were behind because of COVID with the HR finance. And then we had a couple of our employees who left and, you know, pursued, um, new, um, new positions, um, elsewhere. And so that set us back a little bit, you know, as far as that. So we had some transition. We had to hire, um, consulting firms to come in and help, you know, help move us along. The employees that have been involved in phase one have just put in an exhausting amount of hours. Uh, many of them have been allowed to carry over vacation through December. We're hoping that now that they can take time to breathe as we get into now this new student development phase. But now that we're back on campus, you know, we, you know, we're all, you know, we know what it's like to work in COVID. We are back on track for that and will continue. There's a lot of work to be done, um, in multiple phases.
Did any of our CARE money go to help pay for overtime or anything that they had to do? Because I know we had money from that. Did that go to help? Because this was definitely a college thing that needed to be done.
Yeah. So CARE's money is used, you know, for training and various, um, very aspects. The other area, you know, we had to extend, I think it was in June, we extended, um, Jerome Godlock's contract. And much of that is to do with because of the fact that the process has been slowed. Um, so due to COVID, we will be able to look into that and, and absorb that cost in the CARE's funding as well. So, um, Jeff, Cecil, they do a good job, um, assessing that. We have the, um, mini grant request process. So we have individuals looking for, um, ways to use that money to help, you know, faculty, how, you know, now they've transitioned their, you know, teaching. Many of them are online or what they're doing with the students. And they're, you know, utilizing those funds to help them expand their course delivery, um, come up with new ideas, our training, we're investing in mental health. Um, counselors and staffing, you know, we've used some of that money there. So, um, we're using it in a very positive way. I know we're also, we are, Cecil's working for an extension for the ARP, um, to see if we can extend that into fiscal year 23. And again, that allows us to spread out that money. And then, you know, some of it that we're actually looking, you know, and I mean, looking at is, you know, do we have to shift more of that money from institutional to support our students? Because the goal is to get our students back on campus.
And then my last question is, um, whenever you are, whenever you're out of, out of norm as far as, you know, coming on campus during the summer and all that, do you guys have protocol for dress codes for business casual? Or is it just come as you are? Because I'm, I'm bringing that up because I've seen some people on campus. I don't know if they're students or they're just here, but I know they work here. So I'm just asking, what's the protocol for dress if we have one? Because.
We do have one. It's in the employee handbook. It is business casual. So it typically is not jeans and, you know, and those types of things. There's probably been a little bit more lax in the summer and with COVID. But I would anticipate that when we return on, you know, the eighth, that, um, cabinet members, the divisions, the supervisors are sharing that, um, with their employees. Because again, we're representing Joliet Junior College. We have community members. We have board members. We have donors that come in. So it's, you know, that, um, you know, that first impression.
The professional image should maintain, we should maintain. I'm just stating that because I saw somebody that I saw walk and I'm like, oh, wow, jeans today. Okay.
No flip flops and tank tops?
Yeah, no flip flops and tank tops.
Yeah, short shorts, you know, those kinds of things. They just don't look so good. Right.
Thank you.
All right. I thank the, uh, the trustees that participated in the presidential search and everybody else who participated also, especially, especially Nicole Whitehead. And I, uh, uh, thank, uh, our president for her continued support. And, uh, I'll say it again. I'll thank you again for our continued support. We don't have, uh, we don't have another closed session tonight.
Well, we can't go in for closed to see for personnel issue?
Pardon me?
I said, can, I thought we were going to go in. Can we go in for personnel, just for a couple of minutes?
Was that part of the agenda?
Well, I'm just asking because.
You just, I know you're just asking.
Because I, I would like to ask, and I don't want to ask it out here if it's a personnel issue. Carl?
If you're asking, can you go into closed session under two C one?
Yes, two.
I don't know what the issue is, so I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that that's the right exception. Because I don't know what the issue is.
It's specific to an employee.
If it's, then it's one, two C one, you can go into closed session or two C one.
Thank you.
Even if it's not on the agenda?
Yeah, we have, uh, we have closed session on the agenda, C one through 29, so that if an issue comes up, uh, at the end of the meeting, we can have a closed session.
Yeah, it is on the agenda. So.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't have to be specifically called out. That's your question. Correct.
Then we'll proceed on two C one. And, uh, after we close, there will be no further.
Are you making that motion, trustee Broderick?
Making that motion.
Joan?
Broderick?
I.
Podzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
And O'Connell?
Yes.